The projects we have on the agenda. Present this evening tonight are Commissioner Pete Risto, Aaron Hildreth is virtual, Ned Hacker, Katie Rogers, Peter Kling, myself, Michael Richards. Excused is Commissioner Jake Pearson. From staff, we have David Rogers and Zach Smallwood in the audience. It's just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, please silence it. This meeting is being recorded for public record. Again, I'm grateful to have you here tonight to participate. Just a couple etiquette items. When the time comes to make a comment on an agenda item, we ask that you speak into the microphone for the recording and we ask that you state your name and your address for the minutes. Please limit your time to three minutes. I will have a timer here and I'll give you a grace period of 30 seconds or so, but please keep it to the three minutes. Once the item you are here for is over, you're welcome to leave. We just ask that you do so quietly so we can continue with our remaining items. If you're viewing the meeting online on the livestream, the only way to make public comment is to email theplanningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Unfortunately, if you post a comment on Facebook or YouTube, it will not be seen in the meeting. So we will jump right into it. We've got a few agenda items tonight. The first agenda item is the approval of minutes for the Planning Commission meeting held on Thursday, January 5th, 2025. Did I say January? Sorry.
June.
Thank you. Have all the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any changes that need to be made?
No.
No.
No. Other than than the one we talked in pre-meeting. So I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2025 Planning Commission as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner, a first from Commissioner Hacker and a second from Commissioner Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. Any conflicts of interest for tonight?
No.
No.
Thank you. And as we discussed in the pre-meeting, we don't have any findings of fact. So we'll move on to our first major agenda item. Item number four, Sayed Auto. And I think David Rogers is presenting. Yes, thanks. Hello, Commissioners. So this is Sayed Auto Sales. This is a conditional use permit to allow auto sales in our CD zone and it's located at 525 West, 5300 South, Suite 125. So this is a three-fourths of an acre site. It's a 330 square foot unit just located south of 5300 South. This isn't too far from the I-15 interchange. It's in our commercial zone. It's surrounded by some residential, several other commercial zones, including our neighborhood commercial and our general office zone. So this is the site and floor plan that was provided. You can see highlighted in yellow, the suite that the applicant will be using as part of this auto sales business. The intention is this for this to be an office for auto sales. And so you can see the office right there. And then this is the site plan that was provided that shows the overall site. So for parking, are based on the size of the units, our parking, our code requires four parking stalls and the applicant indicated that there will be five parking stalls dedicated for this unit. And you can see there, we've kind, we've put, access will come off of 53rd to the north. And so staff does not have any concerns about parking or access. For landscaping, our codes, our code does specify that landscaping is required along main roads like 5300 South. There's currently grass, but nothing like trees or shrubs that meet our code requirement. So the applicant will need to work with staff to put the landscaping in and that will need to be checked to make sure it's there prior to the business license being issued for this business. 16 public notices were sent to all property owners within 300 feet and as of this presentation, staff has not received any public comments for this item. So our finding is that the proposed use for an auto sales business is allowed in the CD zone, subject to conditional use permit approval. With the conditions as outlined in the staff report, the proposed use in property will comply with the standards of the city land use ordinance and the proposed use is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the general plan in this area. So based on our analysis, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property address 525 West, 5300 South, Suite 125, subject to the following conditions, the five conditions, and I'm happy to take any questions. Yeah, I failed to ask if the applicant was here. Awesome. You can stay there for a second, but I'm glad you're here. So thank you, David. Any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Now, if the applicant will come to the podium and please state your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Sayed Amir Abkhah and, and I came to Salt Lake City in 1994. That time I couldn't speak English and I started car business, lot boy at the Pro Auto Care and I love the car business. I know about the car very well and I would like to open the car business and fix the car ride, service ride. And then I was lucky, I wasn't thinking come to Salt Lake. I was heading California, then I fight with my uncle. I end up in Salt Lake, I'm happy, knock on wood. So far, I'm happy and I would like to get this license. Then I can continue my, all my goal and to help my family and help everybody.
Thank you. Can you also just state your address for the record?
The address is 525 West, 5300 South, Suite 125. And I live on Sandy, 9272 South Village Point Way, Sandy, Utah, 84093.
Thank you. And have you had an opportunity to read the, the conditions?
Yeah, I can read all the conditions.
You can read them. Awesome. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I would like to get this license and work harder and help my family and just do the right things as long as you guys can help me. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. You can be seated.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you can ask a question. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sir, thank you for bringing your business here. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I was just curious, could you describe the business? So you're not going to have cars on site. It's not a typical retail auto sales?
No, the, the basically we are going to buy the car, fix the car and only, we have only three or four parking and it's a small business. We are not going to have like lots of car or breaking car and those kinds of things. We are going to have some other shop, they fix the car. We just show it over there as a sell and just a few car to sell it. And not planning to have a like a broken car, accident car. We are not planning that.
So you'll have a, so you'll have a car to present outside the office in the parking lot?
We have to have a two or three car always to put it right there for sale.
To show to buyers?
To show the customer.
Okay.
And but we are not planning to fix the car right there. The other shop, like a body shop or mechanic shop, because when you sell the car, you have to have a right car for the customer. So far, all my customer, they bought the car, they're happy. Then when I fix the car, I fix the car like myself, not for the selling only. That makes sure every car has all the conditions, safety and everything. And then I'm not that much reach to have like a lots of car, only I can afford like a two or three car to survive for my family.
So in my understanding, a customer may approach you and say, I'm looking for a particular type of car.
No, we have to advertise it through the internet and somebody come to look at it. When we sell that car, we go to next car.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question?
No.
So staff, that's allowable that he can have cars showing in the lot, in the parking lot without an issue? You're in the wilderness. Where? Yeah, that's correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other concerns, questions?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, I'll now open the meeting for a public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any additional discussion amongst the commissioners?
No.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to approve, Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property address 525 West, 5300 South, Suite number 125, subject to the following conditions.
Do you want me to read each of those conditions? No.
Okay, all right.
So we have a motion made by Commissioner Kling that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property address 525 West, 5300 South, Suite 125, subject to the five conditions. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second from Commissioner Horisto. Any discussion on the motion? All right, David, can you take a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. The motion is passed. Good luck with your project. All right, moving on to agenda item number five, Larana Auto Sales. Is the applicant here? Thank you. And then we have David again presenting on this one. You're going to see me a lot tonight, so I don't know if I, to apologize or to say, get excited. So this is Larana Auto Sales. It's a conditional use permit to allow auto sales in the manufacturing general zone or the MG zone and it's located at 4195 South, 500 West, Unit 30. This is a site on our northwest end of town. It's 5.37 acres and the unit itself is 847 square feet. It is located in the MG zone and everything around it is also located in the MG zone. So here is the site plan and floor plan that was provided. You can see that it's Unit 30 there. There's a bathroom and a little office. All of the units in this development look very similar to the, the site plan that has been proposed here. And you can see there's a little circle within the, the GARCO development that shows which unit this one will be occupying. We do not have any, we've done an analysis on the parking and the landscaping requirements that the city has and do not have any concerns with this area. This is an area with a high number of conditional use permits and we don't have any concerns with those on this site. So eight notices of the public meeting were sent to all property owners within 300 feet and as of the date of this presentation, staff has not received any comments. So the proposed use for an auto sales business is allowed in the MG zone, subject to conditional use permit approval. With the conditions as outlined in the staff report, the proposed use in property will comply with the standards of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance and the proposal is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan in this area. So based on our analysis and the, what the applicant has provided, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property addressed 4195 South, 500 West, Unit Number 30, subject to the following five conditions, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you, David. Questions for David?
No.
All righty, can the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record?
Hi, good evening. My name, my name is Jose Jesus Rojas. And I've been excited for start this business. I have six kids and I want to introduce him to him to this kind of business. And I'm, it's a business in more, I already have a manufacturing. And I make a new rules on my, this kind of business. Well, I see the, the address is 4195 South, 500 West, Number 30. I live in West Jordan, not 4391 West, shortly drive, West Jordan, 84088. And well, I think I have this opportunity to go out to the action, buy a clean car, average, average, cheap car, sell fast in our community, show my kids to how is detailing, to selling, how is the money is on and how it's working for money and introduce to him to doing something different at the, at the work. So are you open for any question for you, for you guys? Sorry.
That's awesome. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So in addition to auto sales, will you do repair on site as well?
Yes, a little. Not like, like mechanic, something brakes, like something check, check engine, something like that.
Okay.
But no heavy duty mechanic, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to, to say?
Thank you.
Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and open up the meeting for a public comment. And actually, I did forget something. If you can come back. Yeah, just for one sec, I need to ask you on the record if you can comply with the conditions. That's the main point. Yeah, thank you. So there are five conditions here. Are you able to comply with those? Have you been able to read the conditions that you see up there and are you able to comply with it?
Yeah, sure. I read it and I have the visual.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That's it.
Okay.
All right. Now, if there's any public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any additional discussion amongst the commissioners? Okay, if none, I'll ask for a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property addressed 4195 South, 500 West, Number 30, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Horisto to approve the Planning Commission or the, that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property address 4195 South, 500 West, Number 30, subject to the five conditions. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a, a second from Commissioner Rogers. David, can you take a roll call vote? Commissioner Horisto?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations, the motion has passed. All right, moving along, agenda item number six, Holy Protection Orthodox Church. And I believe the applicant is still here, or is here. Awesome, thank you. And David is again presenting. Hello again. So this is the Holy Protection Orthodox Church and this is a site plan approval for a new church building located in our general office zone at the address 6109 South, 900 East. So this is just over a half acre site and the plan is for a, of one story with a basement, 8,000 square foot building. It is located in our GO zone and there is general office to the north. There is low density, single family residential to the west and to the south and the east is A1, which is an agricultural zone, but it's historically been a low density, a single family zone and it is still used in this area in that case. So this is the, the site plan that they have proposed. They've proposed a church building closer to 900 East with parking behind it. You can see here the parking stalls and the floor plan of the church building that they proposed. These are the specific floors that they called out. The first floor will have kind of the sanctuary where the pews are and then they will have some office and gathering space in the, the lower floor as well. So these are the building, building elevations that were provided. Something specifically to call out here is that our height in our GO zone, the church building, the roof you can see there is 23 feet, which is below the 30 foot requirement that we have in the general office zone. And our code does have a specific call out for objects such as steeples or domes that exempt them from the height requirements of the underlying zone. And so this building does meet the height requirements due to the way that our code specifies where we're measuring height from. But yeah, you can see all four elevations, so north, south, east and west as well. So for the landscaping, the applicant has provided a landscaping plan which meets all staff requirements. You can kind of see they've got landscaping all along 9th East, all to the north and the south of the site, as well as around the perimeter of the parking lot as well. Our code does require a six foot masonry wall between commercial and residential uses in this zone and the current plans do not show that. So a condition of approval is that the applicant must show the six foot masonry wall between their project and the adjacent residential neighbors before a building permit will be issued. So for parking and access, access to the church will be off the private lane to the south. The applicant has indicated that there is an easement for that right of way that they have access to, which will allow them to access the site. Our fire and engineering departments have made a requirement that there be 20 foot of asphalt or pavement for the lane to allow for two-way access before the building permit can be approved. And the applicant will need to work with staff to ensure that that is done prior to, again, that building permit being issued. So parking in the GO zone for churches, the requirement is one stall for each seven feet of pew. And they have indicated to us that there will be 19 pews that are seven feet wide and they have provided 19 parking stalls, which meets our code. So city staff will work with the applicant to ensure that all parking and access requirements are met prior to the issuing of the building permit. And we've also made sure the applicant is aware that all parking for the church must occur on site. Due to it being a private road, they need to make sure that all of their parking is, is on site in the designated parking area and does not spill over to the surrounding roads. So 27 notices were mailed to property owners within a 300 foot radius and to affected entities, which include things like other cities, utility companies, to make sure they were aware that this was going on. At the time of this presentation, staff has had in-person discussions with three residents who've come to our front desk and sat down with us and we've had conversations and talked about some of their thoughts and concerns. And we've mentioned to them that they are welcome to attend and comment at this meeting. Staff also had a call with a resident late this afternoon who sent in an email, which will be read into the record when you open the public comment portion. So for our findings, staff performed an analysis and found that the proposed use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan. Staff believes that with conditions, the proposed plan meets the requirements of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance. And with conditions, the proposed plan will enhance the visual and physical appearance of one of Murray's most important connectivity centers, 900 East, per the Murray City General Plan, where that is explicitly called out. And with conditions, we believe that the plan will promote the continuance of making 9th East a more vibrant area of Murray City. So based on our analysis that we performed and the comments we've received from our other city departments, staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for the proposed Holy Protection Orthodox Church for the property addressed 6109 South, 900 East, subject to the following conditions, and I do want to specifically comment on those conditions. So the applicant shall meet all Murray City engineering requirements. This is where it is spelled out in the staff report that they need to have that 20 feet of pavement. And if they need to work with UDOTs and get any UDOT permits for any adjustment to their road, that is also a condition that our engineering department has stipulated. The applicant shall meet all fire departments, which again talks about that access. The applicant shall meet all water division, wastewater division requirements. The applicant shall obtain a builder permit, building permit prior to any construction occurring on the site. And the way that we do reviews here in the city is all of the departments, so planning, engineering, power, everybody will look at the building permit prior to it being approved to make sure that these conditions are all met prior to that being issued. The applicant shall work with Murray City to locate a 20 foot paved access drive to the site per engineering and fire. The applicant must show a six foot masonry wall on the property line that is adjacent to the residential area or the residential zone, so the A1 zone, prior to the issuance of the building permit. The applicant shall meet all landscaping requirements of Chapter 17 dot 68 of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance, including the street frontage landscaping on 9th East prior to planning approval of the building permit. The applicant shall meet all parking requirements of Chapter 17 dot 72, including EDA stall regulations. And the applicant shall meet all sign requirements and obtain separate building permits for any and all signage they obtain. And I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you, David. Questions for David?
No.
Okay. Can the applicant please come to the podium and please state your name and your address, your home address for the, the record?
Hi, my name is Jesse Allen. I'm with GSBS Architects on behalf of the owner of the project. My home address is 7060 South, 2985 East in Cottonwood Heights, Utah, 84121.
Thank you. Have you had an opportunity to read the conditions and are you able to comply with them?
Yes, we have read the conditions and we're happy to comply with them, including the additional, we'll modify our site plan to include the additional 20 foot drive access and the six foot masonry wall along that back edge.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add to the public record?
I think it's just important to note that this is a, a new church for a tight knit group of existing Orthodox members. They currently have about 30 people in their congregation and this building is to replace where they're meeting at right now and hopefully, you know, grow a little bit, but it is a, a 30 person congregation. So the 19 parking stalls will be more than adequate for the current congregation and future growth. I, I think the other thing to note is that the size of the sanctuary is approximately about a third, just for reference, about a third of the size of a standard Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints meeting house. So much smaller than, you know, other churches. I think it's also important to note that the, the general office zone permits many more highly intensive impactful uses that, you know, could be located on this property. I think that the church is committed to, and, and the owner is committed to being a good neighbor, you know, maintaining the, the drive with, with the neighbors, complying with the parking requirements. And, and the building is designed in a way that is brick and stone, really beautiful landscaping and is really intended to enhance and add to the, the quality of the neighborhood and to be a good neighbor, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional context, super helpful. Questions for the applicant?
I have a question. So in our pre-meeting, we talked about traffic on 900 East, particularly on Sunday when Wheeler Farm has a lot of activity and the parking to the south of this access. So that's one thing. My real question is, other than, or what other kind of activities do you have at your facility?
Yeah, that's a, a great question. And the owner wanted me to point out that many people might be familiar with the Orthodox Church downtown that has a cultural center next to it and hosts the popular Greek, Greek festival. This church here that's being proposed is primarily, first and foremost, a place of worship and does not intend to hold festivals, cultural festivals like the, the church downtown. So he did want me to make that distinction. And the church is primarily intended to be used on Saturday nights and Sunday mornings. That'll be the primary use. They also adhere to the Orthodox calendar, which has ceremonies occasionally throughout the year on other days of the week. And for example, Orthodox Easter lasts an entire week and they, they do have a service every day of that week, but not everybody attends all of those services. They get a wide range of attendance. And, and so there will be activity throughout the year, but it's, it's along with the Orthodox calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I really like the idea of the church coming into Murray. What would be the capacity then? You said there's 30 congregants now. How many might, what's the, how much room is there in the sanctuary?
The whole room, if you take the whole space for the building permit, is about 80 people in that, in that space if you take the whole area.
What color is the dome going to be?
We're still trying to decide that with the owner.
Gold type dome?
No, no. It, it'll likely be a, maybe a dark gray. But the, and the stone and the brick are a tan, kind of a beige, natural, neutral tone. There's darker molions around the windows and then the dome might relate to, to the window.
When do they expect to break ground and then open it up for services?
As soon as we can get a building permit.
Oh, it's just us standing in between them?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Thank you.
They're eager to get open.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll open up the meeting for a public comment. Just a reminder, if you come to the podium, please state your name and your address and limit your time to three minutes. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So this comment is from Tracy Foster, and it says, Dear Commissioners, my name is Tracy Foster, and I reside at 6165 South 900 East in Murray. I am writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed construction of a new church building and associated offices at 6109 South 900 East. While I respect and support the right of any religious organization to gather and worship, I must raise serious concerns about the impact this project would have on our neighborhood, particularly in terms of safety, accessibility, and infrastructure. Access to our home and the neighboring residences is dependent on a narrow privately maintained driveway located off 900 East. This road is not wide enough for two vehicles to pass simultaneously. We frequently have to pull over to the side to allow neighbors through. The proposed church's limited parking, approximately 19 to 20 spaces, is insufficient to accommodate the expected volume of attendees, particularly during peak times such as services, weddings, and special events. The overflow traffic will almost certainly spill into our private lane, nearby residential areas, and 900 East itself. This becomes particularly problematic concerning, considering the already limited parking on Sundays due to the Wheeler Farm, farmer's market just down the street. The influx of vehicles could create significant congestion, hindering residents and safely, from safely entering or exiting their properties. More critically, the safety of our families is at stake. Attempting to cross 900 East during heavy traffic is dangerous due to the high speed of vehicles on that road and the lack of safe alternatives for merging or pulling out. Delays could result in accidents or worse. Our neighborhood includes many children and pets, and the increased traffic volume poses a direct threat to their safety. Additionally, the wear and tear on our private road, maintained solely by residents, will be exacerbated by both construction and ongoing use. Safety is our foremost concern. According to the Utah Department of Public Safety, Murray experienced seven fatal traffic accidents in 2022 involving 13 vehicles and three pedestrians. Just recently, on June 30th, 2025, a serious motorcycle crash occurred near 4500 South 900 East, requiring emergency medical response. These incidents underscore the dangers already present on 900 East, a road known for high-speed traffic and limited visibility. I can urge the commission to consider alternatives for access, ideally a direct entry from 900 East that does not rely on our shared private road. If this is not feasible, it raises serious questions about the suitability of this development at this proposed location. The safety and quality of life for existing residents must be a guiding factor in these decisions. Thank you for considering these concerns. I respectfully request that the planning commission thoroughly review the impact of this development, the impact this development will have on our community and explore alternative access solutions. Sincerely, Tracy Foster, 6165 South 900 East, Murray, Utah.
Thank you, David.
Hi, my name's Paul Taggart. I live at 6125 South 900 East on the lane. And I, we've spoken as neighbors, there's seven people that live on that property, on that lane. And there's questions that we have for the owner. One, they have a 12.75-foot right-of-way. So any access on that right-of-way would have to be added for 20 feet. They'd have to add at least six and a half feet, seven feet, on their own property, which is not shown on the site plan. They would also have to get permission from UDOT to widen the apron coming off of 9th East, which I don't know, have you, where's the architect? Have you spoken with UDOT about widening that apron?
Yeah, well.
Anyway.
You can ask us and then we'll rest it him later.
The other thing that we're a little concerned about is if the property line, if the fence, the existing chain link fence is on the property line, it's five feet off the asphalt now. So they have basically seven feet, seven and a half feet of asphalt on the existing driveway that they can use. That's it. They don't have access off this road, and their right-of-way is way too small to meet your requirements. These are map. So the safety issues here are huge. Right now, for us to drive out of this driveway on Sunday morning, you're taking your life into your own hands. You have no, zero line of sight. You have zero line of sight looking south on 9th East when all those cars are parked there. And if this church five years from now gets up to 80 people, or they have a wedding, or they have these activities, where are these people gonna park? It's a severe safety issue. I think if they could answer these questions and address this so that it's safe, and they actually have the access, and UDOT gives approval for the apron to be expanded, and they show a revised site plan, so they actually do a survey to see where the property line meets the existing asphalt, a lot of those questions could be answered.
Thank you. Yeah, no, helpful. I think we all agree there's a access concern here, and that we, and we will address it via comment tonight and also as we work with UDOT in the future. Additional public comment?
Hello, my name's Brett Davies. My address is 6101 South 900 East. I'm the property adjacent to the north of the proposed church. I am grateful to have a chance to just talk for a moment. I hadn't seen the site plan or anything until tonight, and I applaud the architect for doing a good job. I think the landscaping looks nice. I think the walls are good, and I think overall it's gonna be an improvement to our neighborhood. It's been an empty lot with weeds growing on it as long as I've owned my property, which is over 20 years. And I think all in all, I'm happy to see a church go there. But I am concerned about the parking. My building is one that has parking currently, a parking lot, and I have problems with Wheeler Farm on Sundays, people using my lot. And I feel that the, for 30 congregants and only 19 stalls, I don't think that can be adequate. I don't know. I haven't seen that in my personal life in other churches dealings where 19, or 19 stalls can handle 30 congregants, and then the special activities and things. I'd hope that they could be able to work out the parking and that this could be proceeded, but I think it should be stopped until that can be addressed and fixed.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lina Miller. I live on the private driveway at 6127 South 900 East. I have resided there with family for over 40 years and have been engulfed with development on our east, north, and all around us. At this time, I really feel that this is a very inappropriate place to put a church since this is a private driveway, an undedicated street. Like the neighbors have said, we can barely get up and down the street as it is now if someone's coming that lives there. My concern also is for the children that reside there and a lot of the people that are there, and especially in building the building. We will have no other way out of our homes for people to get to work, to school, emergencies, doctor's appointments, whatever it might be. We've had constructions of homes and other buildings there before, and our road has been continuously blocked. And as far as the fire department, there is no way for them to come down and turn around there. That is so narrow where they come. We do not want people down our little driveway. Can you imagine coming home to your home at night and having a building there using your personal driveway while you're trying to get into your home? That's actually what it is. Property has been in my family for more than 125 years, a 10 acres going down that way before it was developed into homes. I believe that people can worship wherever they may. I have no problem with that. I just think that this is a very inappropriate place to put that because there is no parking. We don't want people coming down the street. We've already had that when they cleared the lot, when they did seismic testing, they were way down the road. They blocked driveways, putting down their wires and boards. We've already run into a lot of trespassing that way to begin with. That is one of my main concerns also. Can anyone answer the question of how long would this building take to build?
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Dan Brett, and I live at 6123 South 900 East. Just a couple of things to add to whatever has been said. There's the, the street right in front of that property is a bus stop. That's just one other complication. And then that's also where we pull our trash, we, the trash man doesn't come, garbage man doesn't come down our lane. So that's where all the trash cans are, and they take up the whole front of that property. So just a couple other little, relatively small considerations.
Thank you. Helpful.
Hi, I'm Emily Hilton. I live at 6121 South 900 East, so my property is budding up against the church. I would just ask if they would consider flipping the parking lot to be at the front of the building instead of at the back? I think that that might help with some of the right-of-way issues. Obviously, they need that 20 feet, and if they're gonna have to go all the way down the lane to go to the back of the property, that's just wasting a lot more of their space that they're gonna have to cut into their property. So maybe flipping it might be a solution. I'd also like to talk about the masonry wall that will butt up against my lot. I just have beautiful, large, gorgeous trees, and I would hate for them to have to dig up those roots and ruin those trees. So I'd love some, like, confirmation that they won't hurt my trees. That sounds small, but it's actually not small for me, especially living so close to 9th East. That's, that privacy is huge for my family. And then I just would say, I'm not against having a church there. I think, like, I would love to be a good neighbor as well, and I think it's fine. I just, the whole reason that we bought a house on that lane is so that my four small children could ride their bikes and be free, and it's a safe place for them to play in the street. And that's a huge reason why we bought that property in the first place. I have four kids under four, and we plan on living there forever. So I would just also ask, like, how can we ensure that, you know, if they're gonna go into the parking lot, can we somehow ensure that they're not going to then continue to drive down the lane? It is this really hidden gem street, but we wanna keep it that way, and I don't want traffic going down the lane. I think it's fine if they pull in and park in the parking lot, but it's just kind of hard to say, like, how do they not, how do we keep them from not going down, right? Just purely for the safety of my kids. So those would be my main things. Can we flip the parking lot to be at the front? Can we make sure that my trees don't die from this brick wall? And let's minimize traffic going down our little road for the safety of my kids.
Thank you. I'm an advocate for trees, so personally, well, just kidding. I think your trees will be fine, though, but we can address it. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Can we have staff kind of explain the parking? Because that seemed to be, like, explain the code behind the parking so that that can be addressed?
Yes, we can. Yeah, and David, there's a bunch of issues. I wrote them all down. Maybe you can start with that one and you can just go with the other ones? So as I kind of talked about in our, in my presentation, the parking for churches is very explicitly spelled out in our code, and it is as follows. They have, there's several options that our code provides for parking for churches. It is one parking space for each three and a half seats, one parking space for each seven feet of linear pew, or one space for every 25 square feet of floor area where temporary seating can be located. And it does specify or, it does not say and in our code. So the applicant has indicated to us that the intention is to have 19 pews that are seven feet long specifically. And so our code says that if they have a seven, if they have seven feet pews and they have 19 of them, our code expressly allows them to have that number of parking stalls. So by having 19 parking stalls for the number of pews they have told us they're going to have, our code says that they do meet their parking requirements.
Let me just clarify that. So if they have 30 congregants now, and then they may have as many as 80 to meet the capacity that the gentleman had already presented, that seems to be more than 19 parking spots, no?
So their plan does have 19 stalls.
No, I understand that, but that's not gonna accommodate as many as 50 to 80 people, is it?
Sorry, I was just gonna come in. So what the architect was stipulating is that if you take the pews out, and it would be kind of the fire code, so the building max capacity would be 80 people. That doesn't, that doesn't mean that they aren't going to have 80. So he kind of mentioned the building, the building capacity, right, is 80. So, but they've stated that they are going to have those pews. So we don't anticipate that because, I mean, pews are heavy. So I don't anticipate those moving. That's the difference.
So I mean, you're basically estimating against 30 attendees and therefore 19 stalls? Is that how the formula works?
No, it's based, I'll let, sorry. No, no, I appreciate the support. So we are doing it based on the number of pews. Our park, our code specifically calls out that parking is dictated by the number and the length of the pews. And they have indicated to us that the pews that they will be providing match the requirements in our code, seven feet of pew for one stall, and that they will have 19 pews that are seven feet wide. So that is what we're measuring parking against is the number of pews in the building.
Thank you, David.
I suppose if they do grow, they could expand parking? Is there space to expand parking?
They've indicated to us that this parking is sufficient for the intended use, and so that's what we're, what we're going off of.
Okay. What about the, let's talk about the access concerns. And we mentioned UDOT in the pre-meeting. Can you address that, David, please?
So, yes. So we have talked extensively with both our city engineer and our legal department about the access on this private road. Our engineer measured the apron, so the access apron that is currently existing on that, on that area. It is not all paved, but the apron is currently 22 feet wide. So we do believe, our engineer believes that the apron is sufficient for an expansion of the pavement of this area. And regarding access on the road, the applicant has provided to us deeds that indicate that they have access to the right-of-way, that both our city engineer and our city attorney have looked over and have verified that what they have given us is sufficient for us to find that they do have access to the lane and can use that for their right-of-way or for their access.
So to clarify, they're entitled to share that private road?
That is what the documents that they've provided, pardon me, indicate, based on our engineering department and a legal analysis.
David, before you leave, so if there is in fact, the apron is 22 feet wide, does, does the, hold on, does that space still need to be approved by UDOT, or can the property owner pave?
If they are paving off of 9th East and on the private lane, it does not need to be approved by UDOT.
What about the fact that the, the, not the access, the...
What about the fact that the, the, um, acc- not the access, the, um, approach actually belongs to the state? Just like the approach to your personal driveway belongs to the city. So does the state still have to approve that?
If any work is done on Ninth East, our engineer has stipulated in their comments in your staff report that they would have to get any and all permits required of UDOTs, and so would have to get UDOTs permission if anything is done on Ninth East.
So it sounds like, yeah, thank you. It sounds like there's some disagreement on whether there really, it really is wide enough. It sounds like we have confirmed, you know, a plat recorded. We've, we know that it's twenty-two feet, right?
So, thanks, Chad Wilkinson, Community Economic Development Director for Murray City. As David indicated, we've had, there's several documents that outline the right-of-way, and it might not be bad to call the applicant back up, um, for their interpretation of that as well. However, this is a private, private road, um, is, you know, so it is subject to private easement, private agreement. The applicant has submitted documentation that's sufficient for the city to move forward this application. If, if there is a disagreement about the width of the driveway width, or the, uh, the width of the access, excuse me, that would be, have to be something that would have to be resolved through some type of a private civil, um, discourse, civil, civil action, not through the city. So for the planning commission, again, we've, we've reviewed their documentation. We feel comfortable moving forward. Um, and that's not an app, that's not a issue for the planning commission to arbitrate. That's something that they would have to arbitrate privately. If they, if there's a disagreement about the width of that, uh, driveway and who, the amount of access that's available to this property, that would have to go through a private, um, type of a, a civil, uh,
Thank you.
process. Thank you.
And then, uh,
I need to clarify-
Yeah, no, no.
I'm sorry.
We'll have to do it later.
This is not, this is not time for public-
Can I answer a question?
Not at this moment.
Look at the map. That's an engineered-
We'll look at it. Can you, can you please take a seat? We'll, we'll come back to-
An engineered right-of-way by an engineer, it's not big enough.
Let's, Zach, or I mean, David, can you please, um, when we talked in the pre-meeting, we talked about working with UDOT on just the, the blind spot in the, the right-of-way?
Yeah, I am happy to talk about that. So because Ninth East is a UDOT road, Murray City does not have the authority to go and put no parking signs on Ninth East. But Chad and I had a extensive conversation with our city engineer this morning about this, and we are broaching UDOT to inform them that we would like to put no parking signs along Ninth East, um, to the north and south of this road to kind of relieve the, the legitimate safety concern that goes on on Sunday mornings in this area. So we are reaching out to UDOT to get that. And once we have UDOT's permission to put up no parking signs, the intent of the city is to put them up as soon as we can.
Thank you. So we are working, we're actively working with UDOT to hopefully mitigate the concern off of Ninth, Ninth East.
That is correct.
That is much as we can do right now. Um, I, while we're on this, I wanna, if I can, call the applicant back up to address the twenty-two, if, if he can, uh, the twenty-two foot question.
We were just informed of the twenty-foot requirement a couple of days ago, and so we're happy to, we, we've studied it on our site plan, and we've already started to figure out how we can modify the landscaping on the applicant's parcel to accommodate the rest of the twenty foot. So we'll, we'll make the change on our site plan. As to the question about the twenty-two or the UDOT, um, we haven't had a chance, um, given the amount of time we've had to contact UDOT, but we're, we will comply with UDOT requirements. If we need to widen that, um, access, we'll, we'll work with UDOT as needed to do so.
Thank you. Um, so, I mean, to me, it sounds like we're doing what we can to address the concerns that have been stated thus far. So, thank you. Go, go ahead.
Oh.
The applicant-
Could you come back, please? I'm sorry. Um, the woman's concerned about the trees, I don't know, that might be a private matter, but she was talking about the, the masonry wall and whether you're able to take that in consideration in terms of the building and work that out?
Yeah, um, I think it's important that we do everything we can to, to engineer that wall to protect the trees. Um, we have, the, the builder is the gentleman sitting next to me, and he's very capable. And, um, I think it's important that we do everything we can to, to be a good neighbor. So I, I mean, maybe the, the right thing to do, I know a masonry wall was, was recommended, but maybe we look at doing a, a type of wall that has piers, a series of piers that could be bored into the ground, you know, at ten foot spacing or fifteen, you know, something so that we're not impacting that root growth as much. Um, so I think we can figure out a way to be sensitive to the trees on that east side. There is a, there are the, uh, detention basins, the storm tech system underneath the parking lot itself. So once we get into the parking lot, which I think there's a ten-foot landscape buffer, um, we will need to be digging down and to accommodate that detention and retention, um, water requirement. Um, so I think once we're past that ten-foot, that's where we're gonna really start to impact it. But, but as far as the wall goes, we can do everything we can to mitigate that.
Keep going.
As far as the parking's concerned, your congregants will, it will be sufficient for the existing parking that there won't be, um, issues with the neighbors on parking on the private lane?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna tell the applicant, um, after this, have a call with them and, and, you know, let them know, uh, the requirements that are, are up here. And, um, you know, it's clear that the church has to park within the parking lot. Um, you know, I, I think another opportunity, the, the neighbor to the north is here. We haven't had a chance to talk about this, but, you know, maybe there's a shared parking agreement or something with the neighbor to the north if there was overflow. And if, if it wasn't during business hours and it was, you know, a, a deal that worked for both parties, you know, maybe that's a solution rather than, you know, um, parking along the lane or, or on Ninth East. Uh, although I, I mean, until Ninth East is signed, technically, I think that, I, I don't, I don't know the situation on Ninth East, but I, people are apparently parking there now.
What about, um, while we're on that topic, the suggestion around flipping the parking lot? Was that considered at one point, or what, and what are your thoughts on that?
Um, I think that, that, the, uh, congregation and the owner would like to have the church closer to the street for the presence on the street and in the neighborhood. Um, typically, Murray City and other cities don't want to have parking lots facing the street. Um, they'd rather have the building there and the parking in the back. Um, so I think, I, I think that's probably something we can't accommodate at this point. It wouldn't align with the, the goals of the project.
Okay, thank you. And maybe stay there for just a second. Um, yeah, and just real quick on the, uh, the masonry wall. Uh, in my experience in planting trees for decades and, um, especially if they're bigger trees, they should be okay with holes every, so, uh, so far, or every ten feet or whatever it is. The, um, but I'm sure this, as the applicant has mentioned, they'll do their best to mitigate any, any issue. Yeah, and so, as I'm hearing you, yes, I'm sure we can. But I, I just wanna make a, a point of order. Um, so this is a public meeting, and as much as we want it to be a fluid back-and-forth conversation, we're required to do it procedurally. I can open the public comment back up at some point if, if additional comments want to be made. But for now, we're just kind of going, um, by the, uh, the concerns that have been raised. So other questions for the applicant while he's up here?
Chair, can I address the masonry wall?
Sure, yes.
I, I may rec, make a recommendation to staff or to the council that item seven be changed to show a six-foot, um, screening wall or screening fence. Uh, I'm worried if we say that it's masonry, then it, it's gonna need a continuous concrete footing. And I think that if the goal is to screen up to six feet, we're happy to do it. Um, but if we don't, but if we call it masonry, then it's gonna need to be masonry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Steph, but is that code that it needs to be masonry, or?
Yeah, it states in code that it needs to be masonry, but we, we have typically allowed post and panel type, type things to be done, um, as meeting masonry.
So, so Zach, then it could kind of be posts that doesn't, the-
Correct.
The foundation doesn't have to dig into the-
Exactly.
The whole way.
Yeah. So for example, you could look at things like Brad Reynolds', uh, properties on, um, like Fifty-third, right over here. Um, we stipulated masonry, and those are post and panel. Um, all of Brad Reynolds', um, the Wheeler over on Ninth East, that fence is a post and panel, and we've considered that masonry, um, this whole time. So.
Perfect. I think that's what I was thinking in terms of, I don't think you need a concrete footing if you're gonna do something like that.
So do we need to change the condition, or will we air good?
I think you're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's good, and, and the concern has been stated, and the applicant is willing to, to work, work on it. Um, other questions for the applicant? Just make sure we've covered. Um, there was a concern about a private, or a private driveway being inappropriate, inappropriate place for a church, um, continuously blocked from construction. I, I don't, I, I, I'm sure that's been an issue. The, you know, inappropriate place for, for a church, I, I tend to disagree. I mean, we have churches all over the state that are in, off private lanes and around, uh, neighborhoods. I don't, I don't know that that's, um, a, a concern that's broadly agreed with. Um, there is, I, I think the too little parking, uh, may be a, you know, a valid concern in the future. For now, it meets the code, and there's, I don't think a lot we can do about that. Um, how long will the building take to build? That was a question. Do you, do you know?
I think we estimate between twelve, we're trying to do it in about twelve months. Twelve months.
Um, and then bus stop in front of the property and trash cans. Uh, I don't know if that's something that can, David, can you speak to, like, mitigating that, or how do we address that?
Okay. We have contacts at UTA. We can, we can, we can discuss, um, either relocating that bus stop maybe into a more convenient location. Um, or, or we, we can, we can bring up the, the idea with UTA. We, we have pretty good relationships with them. Um, or see kind of what, what they think would be best. Um, trash, uh, the trash cans, I mean, that unfortunately is probably through a private agreement, um, with those, those, um, with their waste providers. Um, perhaps-
So they could potentially ask them to-
Either come down the lane or, and, and part of that might be that, that the lane is too narrow for a garbage truck. So by potentially widening that lane a little bit, they might actually not have to carry them as far out. Um, I'm not sure. That, that could be a possibility. I can't say with any certainty. Um, but there, there is a possibility for that.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to add real quick, the, the trash can on the street issue, though, that's, that's a pretty common practice for folks to put their, their cans out on the street. I don't know that that precludes this development from going forward, so.
I don't think so either, but I wanted to, um, put it out there to address. I think we've covered most everything. Now, can we, Zach or David, uh, is, can we open the public comment back up?
I have one more thing, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
For staff. Um, one thing that was brought up was traffic going down the lane, um, and concern, like, is there a way we can put signs, like saying, like, pass this point, it's no longer church property, like, now it is private property, you can't go there? What, is there anything that we can do?
I'm glad you asked the question, because I wrote it in my, as she was speaking, I wrote on here, uh, in my notes. Um, so because it is a private lane, it would be up to, like, them to decide if they want to put up some sort of sign that either says dead end or, um, no outlet.
Yeah.
They should probably work with the city, but it's probably, that deters a lot of, a lot of people. Um, so I would, I would ask them to probably reach out to our engineering or streets division. Um, just make sure that what I'm saying is correct and they can just put up a sign. Um, because usually there's certain dimensions that has to be and things like that. But that is a route that they could definitely take.
Okay, so that's something that the private lane-
Yeah, so if it were a public right-of-way, I could definitely have a conversation.
But we can't because it's a private lane.
Exactly.
But it would for sure help, I think.
Yes.
Cause we care about those little kids.
Okay, I will open up the public comment again, but please try and add to the discussion and, and not rehash a, a prior concern that we've already tried to address.
My name is Lori Brett. I live at sixty-one twenty-three South nine hundred East, and I have an idea. Uh, there's a business to the north of the property. They have, um, a driveway, they have parking. What about if they, the church made a deal with them that they could use that driveway and come in that way? And then we wouldn't be worried about our little lane. I don't know. I don't know what the business is, but I looked at it today when we came, and it's a pretty big parking lot, so.
Yeah, not bad to present an idea. Um, we can ask the applicant. Um, it might be too far down the process, but we can certainly ask. Um, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Any additional public comment?
Dan Brett, sixty-one twenty-three South nine hundred East. Um, with the discussion about why they need to widen the lane by a few feet to meet the twenty-foot thing, that's gonna, seems like that's gonna take away from the parking lot, to me. So, just wanted to throw that out as a comment. I'd, I'd like to see what their solution would be to that.
Yeah, my guess is they're gonna have to go back and see how that's gonna impact it, but I, I'm sure they've noted it.
I'm Emily Hilton, sixty-one twenty-one South nine hundred East. One more thing I just wanted to say is our water lines, like, all of our piping to our house goes directly under that lot. So he mentioned that they're gonna have to be digging a lot for that. I just, I don't, for some reason, I don't think that our water line is on public record. Do you know anything about that? It is, you guys know about it? Great. Just wanna make sure that we're not gonna, like, get screwed up with our water.
Not noted, thank you.
And for that matter, the, the city utilities will have all of those utility, uh, lines, water, electric, whatever it may be, identified before any kind of construction starts.
Lots of, uh, paint lines.
I just wanna address the twenty-two foot apron. The city says we have ac, adequate for access on the nine hundred East. You don't. The, the problem is, if you look at that map, that's an engineering map. That's all two, uh, specs. The twenty-two feet that exists right now lines up with the existing road, the existing lane. If they, if the property line is right on the fence, they have twelve point seven five feet. That's it. To exit the twenty-two foot apron. The, the yellow part on your map is not part of the right-of-way and never will be. So they do not have access to that. And one of the questions that we have is if this church is built, how do we prevent them from using the whole lane all the time? I don't think that's possible. They're gonna be using the whole lane. No one's gonna go there and police it and say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't use this twenty, this sixteen feet or this fifteen feet over here. It's, it's just not reasonable that that's gonna happen. So I don't know how you can approve, give a planning commission, grant a site plan approval on a site plan that does not give legal access to their property and meet city codes. Cause it doesn't meet city codes right now, and it's not shown on the site plan. I don't know how you're gonna sign, approve that until they've figured these things out, done a survey, seen where the overlay of the actual right-of-way is on the asphalt now. Cause if it's five feet off, they don't have twelve point seven five feet. They only have about, what, thirteen feet? They're, they're gonna have to add thirteen feet on their side to make up the twenty feet, not eight feet. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
So until that's done, until they do a survey where they find out where the property line is, and where the right-of-way actually sits on the asphalt, I don't see, and deal with UDOT, I don't know how you're gonna approve a- I don't see, and deal with UDOT, I don't know how you're gonna approve a a site plan that doesn't have legal access.
Thank you. Any final? Public comments?
Because this is a private driveway. It's not a lane, it's a private driveway that is not even named. If they trespass and come beyond their lot, is it not our legal right to call the police? We've already had people down there and on the property. We've had other building on that lane before and we've had flatbed trucks. Parking people's front yards across their driveway. Where are all these construction people going to park while this is going on? And. I'm just saying, we want to be able to get out. I know it's against the law to block a driveway at any time. So that we can come and go as we need to. And when we've had construction before on the street. One day I counted over 40 dump trucks and cement trucks that came down the street to build. We had property damage, we had things in our homes falling off the wall, so I'm very concerned about the construction. And what's going to go on before and after. Because right now, the fire department came and put up a sign a couple of months ago, right out on 9th East. Stating every one of our house numbers. Now, you'll never see that on even on a public street. And they said it was in case of emergency for fire to come down, okay? We have had a lot of people coming down our street now. I have chased off many people. We have had cars broken into, we've had other property problems and that's just posting that alone. When we had some construction a while back, we've had our fences run into. We had people coming, dropping people off and. We found, we had car damage in our own driveway where people had come and scraped our cars and kicked our cars and. So you never know who's working on the project and they do wander down and around the street. We've already had it happen. It's already gone on. That is a big concern to us is protection and wandering down. And other times there's been developments behind north of us and around. We had people come over the property. We had them use it for their personal toilet, even though they had outhouses. And it it's just been a mess, so I think we have legitimate concerns over several of these things as it goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment again and also just say, you know, there's, I think there's valid concerns. We're trying to address some of them tonight. There's only so much we can address tonight. This isn't the final step in this process. There will be other times to voice your concern if they are not addressed. As we are trying to address them tonight and as we will with UDOT and other things that the applicant said they will, they will work on.
Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I wanted to ask staff perhaps to address a couple of things. There seems to be from the public comment of the citizens. Some disagreement as to whether the applicant has a legal right to this private road. And then second, this issue about the engineering aspect that Mr. Taggart raised with with respect to the widening of the access. Could the staff please address both those issues?
Thank you.
Yeah, so. In your packets, there are. You'll have to forgive this behind the scenes. Look at this. So one thing we wanted to make sure that was addressed is that there wasn't out this, out the survey done. So there there was a survey completed on the property that shows where everything is located. And that's actually where we identified that there were, I believe it's 21 and 13, I think, are the numbers. Let me just double check. Okay, so 21 is. One of the easements, so this this location here. Also, 13 didn't look like it was quite it. Okay, so it was also 14. So also located here, this this black line, if you can see that. So those are what that was provided to us initially and then I had further requested. The actual documents that are showing that easement. And then we sent, or both of those, we sent both of those documents to the city engineering's, the city engineer's office, who had plotted those out. And and showed, let's see, do I have that? He had measured. Them out. This won't make a lot of sense because they're just kind of boxes. But it it does show that there are easements going along that property. And and like we had mentioned in in the beginning here is that, so with that and with. Meeting with city attorney's office, we felt that that was sufficient for the city. We we were able to confirm that stuff through the survey, through. Being provided those those ease, those right of way easements that not, did not accept them from from access to that right of way. So I hope that answers it.
As, just clarify again, you said that the engineer's survey.
This.
The facts associated with that, the the widening. The city doesn't concur with the public's assessment on that, so that it is within code.
That one I would, I would probably defer to David. He's been talking to. To Trey, the city engineer, Trey and Chris, the city engineer's office. That I think they went out.
I just want to be sure that the facts are actually aligned in terms of the city's recommendation.
I, me too. Is there a way to make sure of that and make the public know that, like provide, like documentation?
I mean, so they also have access to obtained surveys. Those, that right of way. Those access easements should be recorded on their property as well if they have access to that private road. So that would be in their title information as well.
Okay, thank you. David, did you wanna? Add to that? I can just, I'll just reiterate what I mentioned a little bit earlier is that our city engineer has looked at this closely. He's been in discussions with our fire department to ensure safety. We've talked a lot about safety tonight and. It is important for our city that this development has that two-way access, that that 20 feet in our fire code. Is the smallest possible area to allow for a two-way access to get to the church. It would only need to be extended to the edge of their property. It would not be extended any further than that. But our our engineer and our fire department looked at this extensively and do believe that that is a feasible option for this project. Thank you. Any other questions? Or discussion?
Just putting, I'm just putting.
Okay.
The slideshow back up.
Well, I, if I didn't, I'm gonna officially close the public comment. And just bring it back here for any final discussion amongst the commissioners.
It seems, Chair, that based on the city's recommendations and the facts that we have at hand presented to us as a commission. It's, it's difficult to have a different opinion about what the public is saying, I guess, with regards to their concerns. So it seems that this is legitimate use of the property for the purposes outlined by our code.
Well, I would add that what you see up here, the staff recommendation. And the the conditions that are listed there include things that that the city and. The planning commission would. Present to the applicant that those things would have to be done before anything could be built. And part of that is a city engineer which has. Information on the roadway, access to 900 East. The 20 foot. Number six, the 20 foot paved access driveway. Apparent's gonna have to figure out how to do that before they start to build anything. So. This isn't. An approval for the applicant to start digging. This is improvement for the applicant to continue planning to. Meet the city requirements to actually be on this property, so.
Well said, thank you.
Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
Follow up with what Ned said.
I just do want to specify again that all of our departments do review those building permits that go out. And I can guarantee you, I know they're not here tonight, but I can promise that engineering and fire will not sign off on a building permit until their conditions are met. They are very strict about that.
In which case, there's a lot of steps to go through before any dirt is turned, so, and. Lots of back and forth between applicant and the city.
And also add, I mean. I'm not sure if this is helpful. I I agree, I, as a Murray City resident. Something like this built next to me, I'd have maybe some concerns. You know, personally, I think it's a beautiful project. I love that there's diversity of faith traditions coming here. Frustrating that there's a private way, but I mean, there's a lot worse things that could be put there. So I think that's something to to remember. And so. Yeah, I think that's my.
You bring up a good point because another commercial property could rightfully put a project there. And that could be a daily business, five days a week, six days a week.
I think it's a beautiful project and I also want to validate there, I get the safety concerns. There are lots of valid concerns here and I think. Between engineering and fire, like we have all of these divisions and the building permits, they are going to try and provide a safe way for this to work.
I think that some of the things we've already talked about might actually help residents on. On this private lane have better access to 900 East. By. Making no parking zone on the north side or on the south side of the access. I don't know if the residents have ever tried to talk with UDOT to get better sight lines on 900, on 900 East. But this, this could help. Could help.
All right, if that's. Final discussion on it, I will go ahead and ask for a motion.
Chair, I. I recommend the planning commission grant site approval for the proposed Holy Protection Orthodox Church for the property addressed at 6109 South 900 East.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Kling that the planning commission grant site approval for the proposed Holy Protection Orthodox Church for the property addressed 6109 South 900 East. Subject to the 10 conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Hurstrow. Any discussion on the motion? Sounded like Aaron was gonna say something. All right, David, can you take a roll call vote? Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
And Chair Richards. Yes, the motion is passed and again, this isn't the last step in the process. So keep making your voices heard. Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, the Murray Tower Plaza. Zach is going to present and is the applicant here tonight?
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much, commissioners. We'll let David have a small break for just a minute. This is a request from the Triumph Group for master site plan approval for a mixed-use development in the MCCD zone. The properties are 5025 South State Street and 147, I always get it mixed up, I want to do 174. 147 East Myrtle Avenue. It is located in the MCCD. For today's purposes, so. As you guys know, and I'll just state for the record, this zone was changed at the, I believe, the June 15th meeting with the city council. So it really just happened. And but this application did come in before the change in the zoning district and so they are vested under the MCCD zone requirements. So it is a 5.98 acre site. They are proposing 204,000 square feet of commercial. And up to 99 units of residential. As the site plan currently. Shows is is about 78 units, but I do want to be clear that the RDA, the development agreement that was entered into with the redevelopment agency of the city. Does allow them to go up to 99, so we wanted to give them that flexibility. Here, I wanted to start off with the phasing plan. So this is proposed to be a three-phase project. So within the green outline, you can see the the State Street Medical Office Building. I'm going to change this so I can have my little laser pointer. So the the State Street Medical Office, as well as the parking garage, will be built in the first phase. The second phase will be this north side townhome section as as well as the first stacked flats or condo building. And then the third phase will be the second medical office building facing Arlington Avenue. And the remaining residential, as well as the tower portion and the two restaurants. Those are proposed for phase three. I believe we did have a discussion with with the applicant that the medical, the second medical, whoa, second medical office building. May come sooner, but this at least gives us a hard, a hard deadline this. If they build something sooner, that's fine. We just don't want them to do something later, so gives them some flexibility in that. So this gives a little bit better idea of what. What the site plan looks like. So this is the medical office building. Here is the two restaurant spaces. With the tower, the plaza space, the second medical tower. And then townhome units here, the two stacked flat buildings and then two other buildings of 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 town, uh, townhomes. Also, just another view of it, you'll notice that some is, I notice sometimes the site plans aren't the most thrilling thing to look at and sometimes it's nice to look at a 3D picture. So showing as best I can some more of the 3D pictures today. So. With that, what I'm gonna do is show you a boring site plan. So this is the site plan for the property. I've kind of already gone over it with with the phasing plan. But there will be three stories and this kind of represents that. Here a little bit, but there will be a three-story parking structure due to the grade of the site. The third floor will be on Arlington at grade. And then there will be a second level as it continues to go down and then the ground level parking will be at grade on Myrtle Avenue. There's, there's a significant drop there. Curb management plan, so as part of a master site plan approval, we do require that they provide us some sort of curb management planning. And you can see here they've indicated around the perimeter, they propose to red curb all of this area, so that will be no parking allowed. In those areas, it should, it shall be on, within the site. So residential density, I. Going over that very quickly. So for the 78 units, that would be, that would equate to approximately 13 units per acre, so it's pretty, pretty small. And up with the 99 units, they, it would be at about 17 units per acre, which is significantly less than say like our RM25 zone. And significantly less of what they could do. To max out the site. Required commercial, so we require a minimum of 40, for horizontal mixed-use projects. We require 40% of a principal frontage for a depth of 40 feet. So that would have been State Street. So 345 feet of. So 345 feet of frontage along State Street requires about 13,800 square feet of commercial. Obviously, they're far exceeding that, so we don't have any concerns. Let's see, parking, they are well parked, so the minimum required for the parking is, let's see, I apologize, is 491 spaces, they're providing approximately 840, so almost, almost double of the parking required. So I will get into some of the more fun stuff. This is grading and drainage, as you can see, so for those of you that don't understand topography maps very much, every one of these lines is a contour, so it will, it shows kind of the elevation, so you can see that it gets really steep right here. So each one of those lines is, I think about two feet, I think is what it was at, so this drops, you know, significantly as you go down. Elevations provided by the applicant, and then I'll get into the more fun stuff, which is some of the more of the renderings. So here you can see the two restaurant spaces and the medical office that face onto State Street. I wanted to touch on those first as it comes, as it pertains to setbacks. So setbacks in the MCCD zone are a little bit funny. We have like a maximum setback pretty much, so you have 12 to 18 feet from the back of curb, so that would be like this little, this little guy right here where my pointer is, you're only allowed to go up to 18 feet unless you're providing plaza space within that setback, then you're allowed to go up to 25 feet. But 12 feet is the minimum required for the park strip and the sidewalk. We require a seven-foot sidewalk, five-foot park strip. So you really have pretty much a zero to six-foot setback. That is intended for downtown zone, our downtown district, so that they're more closer to the street and have a more inviting, you know, pedestrian experience overall. So when we calculated that, we did find that these pillars, we included these pillars as part of that setback area, they do need to be brought forward just a tad, I think only like one or two feet on both sides. And then also, we'll get on to the medical office building, we were also going to include the pillars here, however, as we were reviewing it, we noticed that they actually don't connect to the building, so we are requesting that that connect to the building to allow for that setback to be included. As well, the MCCD, because it is focusing on a pedestrian environment, we do require entrances on public streets as well. So they have faced their primary entrance out on the plaza back here, which is totally fine, that's allowed by code. However, they are required to provide functional entrances on the public street facing side and it's one for every 75 feet on average. So this medical office building, for example, requires two entrances on State Street that need to be accessed to the building. They need to be functional entrances, so they can't just be like emergency exit doors or things like that. They need to be functional entrances.
These are pedestrian entrances.
Correct. So that also applies to these restaurant buildings as well. We've made a recommendation, I think it was in the staff report, where this can be utilized as like outdoor dining, so if you have a door there that kind of accesses the outdoor dining, that would more than facilitate that requirement there as well.
Zach, is parking allowed on State Street in front of that, where the proposed building?
The shoulder is wide enough to have parking, but there's, they're not allowed to count it towards their parking requirement.
Yeah, but I mean, somebody could park there, then get out and correct those entrances on State Street.
Yeah, right now it is not like red curbed or anything like that, so yeah, you could park out there. Right now, it's probably covered in tarps waiting for the, or tape for the parade tomorrow, so. Okay, so next is moving on to the medical office building on Arlington, largely meets everything that we're requiring, so we'll move on from that. So then we have the townhome, this is the north side, I kind of gone in a clockwise motion. If you're looking at it.
This is north facing?
This is actually east facing, so this is facing the park, this is facing Ken Price from here. So these are proposed townhomes with little walk-ups, things of that nature, and then you have the seven-story stacked flat condos. So the first three floors have two units, so one, two, three, and then one, two, three. So yeah, two on each floor for the first three floors. Then the floors four through six have approximately, I think seven, I think it was, and then the penthouse units are four units. Then as you continue moving southward, you get another set of townhomes with some courtyard spaces, then you turn the corner onto Myrtle, you also have, you know, five additional units there, and then you have the next condo piece. Last, the last major thing I want to bring up is the landscaping requirement, so the city council, when they were considering development of this parcel, requested a text change that was reviewed through the planning commission a couple of years ago that increased the landscape requirements for properties located east of State Street and south of Vine Street from 15% to 25%. That required a total of, I love when I mess up all my papers and I can't find out exactly where I was. You required a lot. So I'm going to sit here and stall for just a second. Okay. So one and a half acres are approximately 65,000 square feet of open space. They have provided a large chunk of that, 49,104, that's over an acre, but they are deficient by approximately 16,000 square feet. And when we calculated that, we made sure that there are places that it could be located, such as like rooftop gardens or, you know, potentially increasing some of the landscaping on top of the parking garage, things of that nature. So it is possible, but we recommend that they work with staff to meet that code requirement. So with that, 42 public notices were mailed to property owners within 500-foot radius and as of the date of this, or as of today, I have not heard a peep. So findings, the proposed mixed use development is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan. The land use code 1100 housing units are permitted in the MCCD zone. Horizontal mixed use developments are allowed subject to master site plan approval by the Murray City Planning Commission and with conditions, the proposed development complies with the requirements of this MCCD zone and other applicable standards of the land use ordinance. So with that, we are recommending that the planning commission grant the master site plan and design review approval, subject to the 11 conditions on your screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Questions?
I have questions.
Go ahead. How many residential units are here?
So as it's shown on the site plan today, 78, but they are allowed, 78, but they are allowed up to 99, so we wanted to make sure we gave that.
And I have some, a couple of questions about the medical facility. So are the medical buildings all administrative or do they perform medical procedures there?
I think they would be allowed to, I believe they would have like an outpatient clinic is one of the things that they're considering.
Do they have any emergency space or they reserve that for IMC across the street?
I would defer to the applicant on that one when that comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Traffic study?
Yes.
Has the city looked at the traffic around Arlington, Myrtle, and the impact on State Street and then the overflow into the area like Ken Price, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, so as part of the requirement, they are, sorry, excuse me, as part of the application, they're required to provide a traffic impact study and that has been reviewed by the city engineer's office. As you know, this is similar to 9th East, but this is State Street, one of the largest arterials, if not the largest arterial street in at least Lake County, possibly the state. And it is, the conditions on Myrtle are not great, but they will continue not to be great. And unfortunately, there's.
There's no improvement on the greatest?
No, not really. And that's part of the difficulty is that traffic is going to be a thing no matter what, anytime development happens. And you can't, I mean, you can control it to a degree, there are recommendations that the city engineer is looking at, however, some of those are out of our control because it is owned by UDOT. UDOT has to approve those things.
But does there have to be a widening of Arlington or Myrtle or anything?
No, there is not a requirement for widening on either of those, they can both handle the traffic. It's really the, so when a traffic impact study, when you look at that, and you'll have to forgive me, I think Pete, you were here on the commission when we had Ryan come in, right, and talk about him? And so what I want to do is I want to have another training with our traffic, with a traffic impact or a traffic engineer, but as part of that, what a traffic impact study does is look at intersections and looks at how those intersections work. So you have a grading system A through F and all that means is delay, how long you're going to sit at that intersection to make a turn, go through, however, however that works. Currently, Myrtle operates at an F and it will continue to operate at an F. For an example, 5300 South and State Street currently operates at an E. That just means there's a longer delay. Sometimes you have to wait a light to go through. A almost never happens, it happens in some residential aspects, but very, very little do you ever get a level of service is what that's called of A. So it's going to continue to operate pretty much as it, as it has.
So I have a question, it might be a two-part question, one for you and one for the applicant, and this may be also too outside the box, so you can tell me. But I feel like there's maybe a missed opportunity in terms of the project. I'm assuming the medical office building is going to have physicians that will have privileges at IMC and will need to go back and forth. It seems like there could be a skybridge that goes somewhere, maybe where the tower is at. I just don't know if that's been discussed or how you, how the applicant thinks the physician traffic back and forth or any traffic could be better addressed versus just going down to the light and going across the street, because that would seem like a really good way to make the pedestrian access across a beautiful project better.
So the only thing I can really state at the moment is that the RDA staff, so Chad, Elvonne, me a little bit, are actively working on potential crossings of State Street for a connection, a pedestrian connection across State Street. I can't get into too many specifics because it's not outwardly public yet.
Has Skybridge been mentioned?
There have been discussions of things of other crossings, so I don't want to get ahead of anybody on that one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to kind of put out there.
Has there been, Zach, any discussion about, this had come up in the past when the city was considering selling the old city hall, parking availability for our theater in that district, that, you know, after hours, whether people, the public could park there to make access to the Murray Theater more accessible, so that people don't have to go on the west side of here at the city hall.
So that was, I think, something that the RDA considered during the negotiation with an RFP for a developer of the site. I'm not privy to that, to that, I don't think it was included, but unfortunately, it's kind of outside our purview to require them to do that. If it's something they're open to, you can definitely ask the question, but we can't require them to provide any of that parking.
I guess this would apply to access to the park, too?
Correct.
With the increased volume of residents as well as other visitors to that area?
Correct.
Okay, well, I can address that to the applicant then?
Yep, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Can the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, I'm Jim Allred. I am with the architectural and development firm Triumph Design Build and our address and our offices are in Murray, which I'm really proud of, which is at 5151 South 9th East. And we have been in Murray, I've lived in Murray for about 45 years and I was trying to find a building lot, but I couldn't find one to downsize because you can see by the color of my hair, I've had some experience doing this. And so it's been a wonderful thing to work with the Murray staff and with the city. We're very excited about this project and we've worked very hard on it. And Zach has really become kind of professional in using the model. You know, I sent him the model, the architecture model and man, he was zipping around it like he knew what he was doing, so. If, if I could plug my model in, I could show you just a few things more about the, and I'm not the tech guy like Zach is, so I can get this.
Here, we can try it. Let's see if it'll work.
So a couple of the issues, which I really appreciated the staff report and the things that were brought up. We've been working with the staff, gosh, for two years on this thing and we've had many, many reviews and much input into what we're trying to do. What we've tried to do is create a public space inside the big plaza area. At one time, we tried to put parking in there and we felt like, no, this has got to be a nicer space for gathering people. We put the tower in, it's kind of a landmark for the city and for the downtown. In 1978, I did a study for Murray City on the buildings along State Street and I'm not really that old, but I am, but so I've had a lot, I've served 10 years on the Downtown Committee Historical Preservation, I taught historical preservation in graduate school at the University of Virginia. So I wanted something that was somewhat of a landmark for this project and for Murray City. People had discussed publicly a lot where they felt like, what is our downtown? Where is a place where we can gather? And I know the city is doing a lot of wonderful things to increase that and make that beautiful. And so we were trying to strive, and if you see these stairs that are going up right past the restaurant, those stairs are welcoming people up into the plaza and they're very wide, okay? And so we're trying to say, okay, why don't you come up in the plaza? And I think one of the things in the code is that you can have your building face the plaza or the street. And so we're having it face the plaza, which we thought would be a much more beautiful entrance into it, as well as people coming down the road and 800 opportunities to park in the parking structure. I also think that things could be worked out with the city in terms of using this for the theater, because you could come through the plaza, down the stairs and over to the theater and then you, we'd work out something, I'm not sure how, but it's always been on our minds is that that would be a neat thing to do. When Zach looked at this, he looked and he didn't think this, these columns attached to the building, but they do. And it would have been hard for him maybe to see on his model, but there's the attachment to the building. So we used the front of those columns as the actual setback on State Street and we created and put this roof over it. We didn't attach it to the building all along because we wanted it kind of be modern looking and interesting. And I think we have the potential to meet his requirements for those entrances onto this walk system that's there along here to punch a couple of entrances into there. But our main entrance will be closest to the parking, closest to the entrance of the facility. And as you look at these columns, we And as you look at these columns, we, we've got those at eighteen feet. And as I come back here to the restaurants, we line the restaurants columns up exactly with that setback that's required onto State Street. But you gotta be able to dance around this thing and see that they're actually there. The nice aspect of this, oh, and you can go underground too, if you're not careful above ground, uh, is that we feel like the landscaping and the walls and the beauty of that. And we've, we, we were, we were concerned about this setback not being a bigger setback. Because the medical building across the street's eighty to a hundred feet off State Street. And we thought, we would like to get away from State Street. I mean, State Street is one busy street. I mean, it's, it's a lot of traffic and we wanted to landscape this. There is a grade, the grade is the biggest challenge on this project. It goes from Arlington down twenty-five foot drop. But the neat thing is, is we got three stories of parking in there. Then we used our townhomes to wrap around and hide the parking structure. So nobody's really going to, as they drive down these little streets, they can't park there. They're not gonna see a line of garages or a line of parking or anything. So, so architecturally, we felt like we were doing a good job that way to screen these things out. But I believe we have hit that eighteen foot and then if not, we can work with the staff and make slight adjustments going forward. I think, let's see, the plaza was something that we really thought could be really pretty nifty. You can see we set up here and we really set the restaurants up so that you could go outside and be in the shade in the summertime. And we took the restaurant and we put a second level on that that was open air. So we could consider that a second level garden. He's not listening. So anyway, we can work with the staff on that open space requirement. Because we have the potential to put, we put some of it on the townhomes. But we could take and get whatever we need on the top of the stacked flats for gardens that are outdoors and that sort of thing.
What about the parking? The parking seemed, I mean, there's a lot of parking, but it didn't look like there's much landscaping like in the middle of it.
Yeah, we, we could certainly take a look at that. The other thing we had contemplated is putting in some shading devices up there and potentially looking at some solar panels and things like that to help with the project. But we didn't want to jump into it too far until we moved it through and made sure the project was gonna work, et cetera. So I think we can hit that twenty-five percent requirement pretty easy. My number's a little bit different than his, so we can get together and make sure we've got the exact number that's been requested, the exact percentage anyway, from the city. So we wanted to make this plaza really pretty nice because we wanted to have a place for the residents to come over here, set up chairs and watch an outdoor movie and eat dinner and uh, be right there in this, this spot where we could have art shows. We'd like to have bands there play, you know, and really make it a fun place that people, if they were going to the theater, as they come back and there was a band playing, they go, whoa, let's sit down here and, and enjoy this. So we're trying to bring some of that energy into this and when, when we were advised, hey, maybe the parking's a little bit of conflict by the staff, we said, they're right, it's not working very well. Let's make this a plaza. Let's make it really nice, open so that the, it's a place we can all be proud of in the city to go to and eat and enjoy some music or a movie, you know?
I mean, it, it, it's beautiful. Thank you. Um, I think it's really coming along. Any additional things you wanted to share?
Have I missed any of the things that I goofed up on, Zach?
I want to ask an access question. So three levels of parking and I know what the grade is over on that site. So do all of the buildings have access from all levels of the parking?
They can, because we have stairwells in the parking structures.
But do they have to come up to the surface or on, on the bottom level, can you walk into the medical building?
You can get up to the medical building with an elevator that comes up through uh, the medical building that's on there. Now, if you look at this, you can see our little pedestrian bridge across from the top level.
But I'm, I'm saying, if you're not on the top level, can you get into the building without going outside? Well, you're outside, but you're underneath the parking garage.
Yeah, and, and you can, from the middle level, you can get into the second medical building. Okay, covered, obviously. And so on this level, the top level, you can get into both buildings, both medical buildings. The bottom level, we were going to use for the residences that were there and the doctors and the employees of the medical buildings. So they had access into there and then the general public had these easy to get into locations to, to facilitate getting to the medical buildings. The, the medical buildings, we have, and, and there was a question asked as to what type of medical, okay? We are working with uh, Utah Cancer and they would like to take probably two and eight, two and a half or so floors. I'm, I, I, we're working with them, but they definitely want to be here. They will be treating cancer patients. They will be uh, working with people on site. They're interested in some of the housing units for people who are receiving treatment. So they can stay right there and family can come and visit them while they're going through chemo or other treatments for cancer.
Is that independent of IMC? Is that some other institution?
Uh, yes, IMC's invited them to, to leave. Now, maybe I shouldn't say that, but they're, they're planning to move into this building.
I'm sorry, who is planning to move into the building?
Utah Cancer.
Oh, okay. But it's unrelated to IMC?
They, right now, they're currently in IMC.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay.
Yeah.
So there is a clin- there would be clinical operating rooms and that kind of thing in there?
We, yeah, we have designed, uh, you know, operatories inside of office buildings before clean rooms and that kind of stuff. So that, and there's surgery centers that are, we've had a lot of people interested in, in X-ray machines and, and imaging for the main floor. We have uh, Granger Medical's gonna take some space in this building. So there will be a lot of customers that come for Granger Medical. And then we are negotiating right now with a group of uh, doctors who are dealing with embryos and that sort of thing. And so they're requesting a generator in case they don't want any damage to happen to the embryo. So we're gonna facilitate that. But uh,
So it hasn't fully been, you've got a variety of different medical um, services going there, but it's not fully slated for, there's o- other people that could come in there, right? You know, meaning like it's not fully, you haven't worked out all the, the arrangements with, uh, there's space for people.
We have got the uh, commitments from several that want to be in this building and then they, they are working on the space planning. And that's when Utah Cancer said, we'll take two floors. They contacted us about a week ago and said, how about two and a half floors? We said, three's good, three's a good number. So uh, we're, we're working with them through that process. But this is primarily, this is medical facilities, but they'll perform a lot of the services in these buildings. Now, they'll also have clients that will be across the street, but it's only a smaller percentage. It's not like they're going to be over there all the time. They probably go in the morning and do their rounds and then come and, and work in this, the spaces here in this building.
Sir, I appreciate your opening remarks about your tenure here in Murray and you understand the city's been working really hard to rejuvenate, revitalize this part of town and all. And so it seems like you have an appreciation for the flow that we're trying to create. And so that's why earlier I brought up about the Murray Theater. I was on the Arts Council for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to rehabilitate the theater. In the past, the areas like the theater and, and that downtown in general, it's had real problems with parking, which had diminished the potential of a lot of businesses there.
Yeah.
Um, and so uh, I've got a couple of questions. The one is, I assume this is all ADA accessible for
Right.
For folks. And then what do the materials look like? I see in the images.
Right.
But can you maybe describe a little bit of materials and then maybe address a little bit, if you can, to the degree that you might make some agreements with the city about the parking access?
I have chatted with the
Pardon me?
With, with the city about working through that process. And so the door's always open for us to discuss that. Okay? And uh, so uh, I guess from your, your initial question was concerning the, the city and our involvement with it. I mean, I actually designed a performing arts center over by the Murray Rec Center that's in the park. Our firm designed and built the Murray Rec Center. And uh, so we had designed a rec center when they were trying to get the rec center here and I think it went to Taylorsville instead of Murray.
Performing arts did, yeah.
Yeah, I think we were all ticked off about that. But uh, anyway, so I really have an appreciation for the arts and uh, the community. So uh, let's see.
I was asking about, uh, it appears the look and feel is fairly attractive, the aesthetics. So maybe talk a little bit about the materials that you're planning to use.
Yeah, I think, I think what we were trying to do is utilize the brick, which was on the old fire station and the uh, oh, I went below ground. Now I'm in the building. Now I'm in the top of the tower.
Could you get to the top of the tower?
And so when we took a look at the tower, we were trying to do something that was really architecturally significant and had traditional historical lines to it. Okay? And w- w- we really wanted to do that completely. So we tried to do that with the tower, with the housing, with the housing towers. We tried to bring into it historical materials. Brick, you know, and I think we have some metal here, like in our restaurants. And then we use the brick columns. And then when we got to the medical buildings, a lot of the physicians like to be in a little bit more contemporary building. But we still tried to make it tie in to the overall project. So that when you arrive there, you go, holy smokes, you go up those stairs, you go, I'm somewhere. This is pretty cool. How can you put this in the center of a city? And, and have this much square footage for flexibility in an art show or in anything like that that would pull the city together. We would, we would really be in favor of that. Uh, and so uh, we use these columns to, to almost create a little more landscape before we hit the street. Because, you know, they say, well, let's have a great experience. And I think the staff helped us. Uh, as we had some, because there's quite a bit of grade, even as you drive by there now, you'll see from State Street up about fifteen feet before you hit the ground. And so it's up there pretty high. So it's difficult to get kind of a, a picture window like the old historical buildings on, on State Street. And so we thought, well, if we can't get that, and, and there's two perspectives. One is the people eating in the restaurant don't want to be seven feet from State Street. Okay? So if we can soften that, bring that back, put in landscape and trees and flowers, they'll come in there and hopefully, the nice thing about it, you see the upper floor here would be open air. That would be pretty nice uh, to go in. And then also out in the plaza, particularly if there were some activities going on out there, you know? Uh, that's, that's what we're trying to encourage.
Thank you. So do you have an, go ahead.
What's the square footage uh, you're anticipating with the condos and the townhomes? And maybe the number of bedrooms?
Uh, I think those are in your packet and I think uh, I'd have to take a look at the drawings real quick. But I think the townhomes are seventeen hundred, something like that. And then we get to fourteen, fifteen hundred in the stacked flats, uh, square feet. And then uh, up in the, the penthouses, we have four penthouses. We took these buildings and we, we initially had them kind of lined up and we said, well, that's boring as heck. So we pulled them apart and we offset them so that when you get up on the upper floors, no one's view is interrupted by another building just across from it. Okay, you can tell we've just been ingrained in the design of this thing. And just every, every week and, and working with the staff, everything that they encourage us to do, we've felt, we felt the project's gotten better over the last two years.
Did you talk about bells?
We talked, we talked about clocks and bells and everything else.
A clock tower. So I, I know we're joking, but like I'm, I'm, I am kind of curious why, why nothing up there?
Well, you know, we, it became an issue of occupancy. Because if, I mean, initially, I wanted to do this kind of cool thing on a few levels and put some historical things in there. And then I thought, well, let's take maybe some of the brick from the old school and put in and have a display of some of the historical components associated with Murray. And then let's take them up here in the top. And as we worked through the requirements to do that, it got so darn expensive. And you had to have an elevator, okay? And that was another several hundred thousand dollars for this landmark. And so we said, well, let's keep it as simple as we can. We'll light it up. We'll, uh, you know, someone said we need to put an M on the roof or something and, you know, I mean, and it might be kind of cool, maybe, but
Makes perfect sense, yeah.
You know, but those are things we think about. I'm sorry I keep going on.
No, 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 it's good. Thank you.
The residences are for ownership? They're not rentals? That's what you're anticipating?
Yeah, yeah. And then the city had recommended that. They felt like there were a lot of rentals uh, around and being built. And so uh, yeah, I, I think, uh, yeah, that was our idea. Let's have people that are invested in Murray buy and stay here, you know? And appreciate all the restaurants that they're putting in and everything and, and get the vitality here. So.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
Um, so the FCCD section about active buildings mentions that developments should include things like furniture science, landscaping, uh, to activate the boundary between the building and the street. Um, I'm not seeing a lot of the street activation along State Street and that large office building. So did you have any street activation planned in that area that I missed?
I think you probably, can you see the, the rendering here with the landscaping and stuff we put along State? We, there is also a bus stop right here. And we've got benches. And okay, here's our sign for Murray Plaza. And so people could wait and pick up the bus. It'd be a nice place to be dropped off right there. So you can go up the stairs, see your doctor. You know, go from, from there. So, yeah, I think we've tried to embellish it and utilize the change in elevation and the retaining wall. And uh, I think, I think uh, we tried to make it attractive and, and get to the entrances to the building.
Aaron, did, did that answer your question? Any others?
Uh, yeah, the video's like fifteen seconds delayed. I'm, I'm seeing it in slow. Um, I just had a follow-up question, um, to this, uh, about accessibility from the residential units to like the state or what says state has in that area. Uh, is it easily accessible? Do they cut through the parking lot? Or are we talking about that, like just walking on the sidewalks like around State Street and uh, like on Myrtle?
I think they can come either way. I think they can come and get out onto the parking structure, come across and uh, go across the bridge, come down there and into the, into the plaza. They can cut across the parking lot or they can follow all of the streets. There is this street that goes right through that kind of gives access to everyone. And, and the, the city encouraged us. In fact, I think, Zach, I think in the last round, you said, we've got to put this sidewalk for people to get, you know, from Arlington to Myrtle. And I thought that was a great recommendation because we all went and looked at it. We've been looking at this for a long time, but I think there were some great ideas that, that were brought up. So, yeah. So, yeah, so it should be fairly easy to get to your doctor and to get to the restaurant.
Okay, so there's like a safe pathway to walk like across that parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Thank you. Zach, can you pull the, uh, other screen back up? And then I'll have you come, come back up, Jim. Need to do the official part here. So, uh, have you had a chance to review the conditions?
I have, yes.
Uh, and are you able to comply with them?
I think we can, yeah.
Thank you. You can sit down. I'll, I'll open up, uh, the meeting for a public comment if someone wants to make a comment.
Hi, my name is Joyce Crocker. I live at two twenty-three East Vine Street. I've lived here my entire life. Um, and I guess the only comment I have is I sat and watched those people who had lived in Murray all of their lives. And I understand that big business and all of that has to come in. But we've lived here our entire lives. I've lived on Vine Street. I, my mother was the owner of Super App Market. I, I want to stay here and, but I don't know that you people care about us that live on these streets. You make comments about Myrtle. It's not safe. The traffic that's going to come through there? Are you putting lights up between Myrtle and Vine Street? How are they getting to? It, it doesn't look like on State Street that they have an option to get into, um, the parking. So I have people park in front of my house for the big monstrosity on Vine Street because they made one and a half parking places for that nice building. So now my whole front yard is people parking and walking to where they live. It's frustrating. And it hurts our city. And I try and walk places. Um, Myrtle is not going to be safe with all of the tra- traffic that's going to come in there. So are you telling me they're coming off Vine Street, going down Myrtle, and then going into the medical center? So that's the only place that you can get there from? Not from State Street? I don't know. It's scary. I think things have to be thought about like that. But it feels like when you come to this meeting, everything's already decided. We really don't have a voice. Because the city engineers say it's okay. This person says it's okay. But we as citizens that have lived here all our lives don't have a say in that. We have to just deal with it and live here? I don't think it's fair. But when I was getting ready to come here, I talked to my ninety-five-year-old mother. And she said, Joyce, really doesn't matter. Progress is going to come over and they don't really listen. I hope that's not true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Peck. I live at one eight-four East Vine Street. So just barely north of this property. And I really appreciate all the work that city staff has put into this and the developer. Uh, I just wanted to express, um, some slight concerns. And I know that some of them are addressed in some of these conditions. But the purpose of the MCCD district is to provide a vibrant downtown with a lot of street activation and have these buildings be part of the street so that people that are walking by, I live just a block away from here. It would be great to be able to walk along State Street and have, like we have just north of Vine Street, all of these small businesses that are the things we're trying to bring in where, um, you have these storefronts along State Street. I wish we could see more of that in this. And I know that some of the conditions include more access from State Street. But I would love a better way to, um, include, other than just this big wall of office right along State Street, if there's any way to adjust that to better fit with the purpose of the, the district to allow that activation, whether that's shifting the office to a slightly different part of, the parcel and having smaller units that face the street so that we can have places for small businesses that we have north of Vine, those kind of small storefronts, whether it's a bar or any other kind of small restaurant like that. In addition to those two, which I think are great, that could potentially move in in the future. Because at the moment with this development, there is no real way to do any adaptive reuse of this building. It's just going to be a massive office building for as long as the life of the building. Um, and I would love a way for it to be a little bit easier to adapt to it as the street develops. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Leanne Parker Reed. Um, I actually live, um, on five seventy-four East Bruce Glenn Road. So not right directly on this property. But I've been trying to follow this property and see what's been going on. One of the things that I had hoped and, um, that maybe there would be an area that would be more of a, uh, senior living community, not assisted living, but independent living, so that they could access some of these wonderful opportunities, like the medical buildings, the onsite, um, restaurants and the plaza and all the community feel. And I appreciate that you've included those kinds of things in this proposed, um, development. Um, I am really concerned about, um, traffic. And that is happening all, all over Murray City. So that is a big concern of mine in general. An influx of, we're just going to go by the numbers you said, eight hundred parking lots. That much traffic in one area. Actually, it's going to go through different parts of the city. But along State Street, um, however you can access that, along those other side streets that these other citizens were talking about, um, that is a huge amount of influx. And that's just from one development. So, um, I, I appreciate all that you're trying to do and how thoughtful you're being at each of these different developments. But traffic is a big thing that we need to address before it gets out of control. And we may have to do that with some UDOT, um, some other types of different ways to get in and out of these developments instead of just one single place or smaller roads or whatever. Um, I just want to make sure that you're checking all of that out as you go along. I appreciate that. But I do appreciate, um, the work that's been put into this. I would like to see something done with that beautiful tower, something. I don't know what yet. Maybe a little garden on top. But then someone's got to go up there and do something with it or see it. I don't know. But anyway, uh, thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Now personally, I think there should be a big water feature in the middle of the tower, waterfall. But I think that's probably not going to happen. Any other public comment? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Uh, and Zach, I don't know if, I've got a couple of concerns that we can maybe address here.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I wrote down some of the stuff as well. I'm, I'm sad. I think the lady that first spoke, um, left. But I wanted to make sure we, we say it's really important to come during, as you guys are, are very well aware of, um, when we develop these codes, we, this goes through the same process of, of, of a public engagement. And the MCCD was developed about fifteen years ago, I'd say. And all of those things were kind of hashed out. And, um, the allowable dens, the allowable densities and, um, design of, you know, buildings and of that matter. And that's where it really, where the rubber meets the road. And so not to put a, a, a kind of a stink on it or anything, but yeah, usually when you're seeing projects at this stage, it's because it largely meets code, um, that was developed a long time ago. So that, I just wanted to
Oh, and go ahead and then I'll say.
Yeah, I just wanted, how many, the old city hall, how many parking spots were there? I have no clue. Well, I'm sorry. I mean, it wasn't as though there wasn't parking. I mean, there wasn't going and comings and, I mean, it's, I, I concede it's probably less than this, but there was probably a hundred or so parking spots.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, it would be far less than what
Um, the other comment I'd make is that I, I noted, I said to, to Ms. Rogers that we didn't have any public feedback. We oftentimes, nobody writes in on most of these things. I was amazed that we didn't get a single comment on this project.
Yeah, I, I was pretty surprised.
So it's a, a little too little, you know, it's too little, too late sometimes when people make comments. Um, and I think, I apologize, I didn't write down the rest of her stuff. Traffic on Myrtle, I, we kind of got, went over that a little bit. It will, it, it should, uh, traffic might not get better. But, uh, it, the environment of walking there will get better. Um, when, when I'm here at work, um, I often walk, I, I take a thirty-minute walk every day and I go down there. And there's very little sidewalk on, that's sparse throughout the whole thing. Uh, this will be nice new, very wide sidewalks, um, that will contribute to a really good, um, environment, I think. Um, and, and that's one way, this is going to be my little planning soapbox. That's the way you, you, um, work on traffic a little bit is providing more mix of uses, allowing people to have more opportunities to get out of their vehicles, um, and, and not need a vehicle. Obviously, everybody's probably going to need a vehicle for at least something. But if you can reduce the amount of trips that people take, um, that, that helps. Every little bit helps. So this is going to become, I can, I foresee this and I can continue to pester on this issue about the traffic analysis. We need to do a better job, I think, as a city, trying to understand that. Because every one of these projects is going to expand the volume, I think, of cars and pedestrian and traffic interaction. And, um, I don't know what can be done, you know? We really need to be able to work with UDOT and, and our own cross streets on this. And we talked about this, uh, along forty-eight South. Is it, is a bike lane going to be on State Street? Or that can't be done? That's a UDOT issue.
UDOT will, UDOT will allow a bike lane.
So I would encourage a city to be able to look more, you know, in-depth about the traffic. I mean, your ENF scoring doesn't engender confidence.
No. I wanted to, it's bad now and it will continue to be bad.
It will, yeah. I mean, that's the gloom outlook. And, you know, one thing to also consider is that, um, we could probably control it a lot more if we were in the middle of Uinta County or, you know, something like that. But we have, we're surrounded by municipalities on all sides. And they are also dealing with growth. And so how, you always have to do that balancing act. Because if, if we do nothing, they'll just pass through us. And we'll just, they'll still use our facilities. And, and, yeah, sorry.
And it seems like, to your point, the, the traffic thing is, it comes up every time. And, you know, our answers aren't, don't resonate. Come on up.
But like I'm trying not to. I know we've got another applicant here and I don't want to keep them here too much longer. But so I'll be very brief. But what you're doing tonight is addressing the traffic. You're, you're creating a, a great walkable downtown. This plan that, that, uh, and thank you, Jim, for all the work you've done. That, that's, this has been collaborative. We had a great meeting with Jim several months ago where we, we had a really good dialogue back and forth about our, our thoughts about this project and how we can make it more pedestrian friendly. But that's, the work you're doing is doing that, right? You're, you're creating these walkable environments that over time, we're going to create a place where people will be more apt to take transit. Where, you know, you get, you get thirty people on a bus, that's thirty cars less on the road, right? But we are constrained within those right-of-ways on State Street and other places. We don't have unlimited right-of-way to create new lanes. So, but this work that you're doing is so critical to, to, to addressing the traffic issue, right? We, uh, you know, it's, there are some things that are recommended in the traffic study for this project that will help. Um, there's, there's a recommendation to, uh, make Myrtle not a full-access movement anymore. So that would be a, maybe perhaps a left-in-only and right-in-right-out. That helps, that helps that delay. That's still a level of service F, but it's a better level of service F. So, um, but like I, I want to make sure you know that the work that you're doing is so vital. It's, you're, you're creating these areas where we can have options or we don't have to rely so much on the automobile. Because that's what, I mean, it's, it's single-driver cars, which we're all in. But that's, that's what's creating the traffic issue, right? So, uh, the work you're doing is so vital. I just wanted to say that.
And thank you. And I, uh, well-received, um, ma- makes perfect sense. I think the comment that I'm, was driving at, and I think we sometimes feel is, I feel like we should have, we should be able to get the ear of UDOT more, to do more. Um, and I don't know how we do that. And I'm sure you guys beat your head against the wall sometimes to try and do that. But I feel like it's such a part of our city, State Street, that we should have bigger ideas around what we're doing around traffic on that, that road. We'll end it there.
Okay.
Any other thoughts on, uh, the concerns, Zach?
Um, I, I, not really anything I can really
Okay. I, I think we'll have to, um, uh, end it there. Uh, let's see here. I lost where I was at. Uh, we're at a motion, right? Okay, so if there is any other additional discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission grant master site plan and design review approval for the Murray Tower Plaza mixed-use project on the properties located at five zero two five South State Street and one four seven East Myrtle Avenue, subject to the eleven conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, uh, that the Planning Commission grant master site plan and design review approval for the Murray Tower Plaza mixed-use project on the properties located at five zero two five South State Street and one four seven East Myrtle Avenue, subject to the eleven conditions. Do we have a second?
Also.
Thank you. You have a second from Commissioner Horistro. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, um, Zach, can you take a vote?
Yep. Uh, Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Horistro?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Hildreth?
Uh, yes.
Perfect. Uh, Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chair Richards?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, finally tonight, uh, it's only nine o'clock.
We should just vote and not listen to the staff review.
David's tired. We're all tired. I'm, I'm sure we can go quick. But, uh, yeah, this is agenda item number eight. And Zach is presenting. I mean, sorry, David. Yeah, you guys give me again. Okay, so this is a, uh, request from a resident to propose a text amendment to increase the number of children allowed at an in-home daycare facility from twelve to sixteen. So the state recently changed their rules that allows this change to be possible. Um, I went through and looked at several of the other in-home daycare codes of the other cities and said, hey, there's some good stuff here. So I'm going to kind of cobble it all together for something that I think meets Murray. So rather than, several of these feel like kind of conditions, like if we did a CUP, these would be conditions that are on there. But we're putting them in the code because we feel like these are good things that will help regulate major home occupation, that's that in-home childcare. But, so all these, these are all the things that are in the code. They were all in your packet. And then along with those, we went through every single residential zone in the city and changed this from twelve to sixteen. That's in all of our single family and in all of our multifamily. So that's the changes. We've added this section and we've changed twelve to sixteen in nine places. Notices were sent to affected entities and posted on the city and state public meeting website for these amendments. And as of the date of this presentation, we have not received any comments. But I'm sure in your package, you saw that there is ample support from several in-home daycares in the city for this amendment. So of our findings, we find that this promotes flexibility for small businesses. Um, it's been reviewed to ensure that health, safety and general welfare are maintained. And staff finds that continuing to support home occupation businesses is supported by the general plan. So based on all that, staff recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendment to section seventeen dot two four dot zero five zero, adding subsection C. adding subsection C, which was all that language, and amending the residential zone to change the number of children permitted at an at-home childcare is reviewed in the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you. And I assume the applicant is over here somewhere? Sorry, I didn't ask if you were there earlier, but I'm glad you're here. So, and thank you again, David. Let's go ahead and have the applicant come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Amy Blockwell and I live at 940 West Waldemeta Drive.
Thank you. Have you had a, or, I don't even know what I'm supposed to ask here.
I've reviewed it. I've agreed it.
There's no conditions. Yeah, what am I supposed to ask? Sorry.
Are you supposed to ask?
She likes.
Do I agree with everything?
There's, you don't really have to ask anything. I mean, she, it was kind of a collaboration thing with staff and us.
So has everything been good? Have they been nice to you?
They've been sweet. He ignored me for two weeks. I had to call Ruth and talk to Ruth.
Good to know.
No, it's been great.
Awesome. Anything you want to add?
No, do you guys want to add anything?
You deserve a little time, given all the time we spent on the other items. So tell us a little. We'll take a few moments.
Why didn't we do this one at the beginning?
Tell us about your business, how long you've been in this business and so on.
I have been in business, I've lived in Murray since nineteen ninety-nine and I've been in business since two thousand and three. And we started out with six children and then eight. And then I moved, I asked for twelve. And then now that my families grow, I need a few more spots available for my little growing families.
That's awesome.
So with the, this change, will you have sixteen? Will you apply for a license from the state for sixteen childcare center that'll manage sixteen kids?
Will I apply for a center?
Apply for a license.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's, as soon as I leave here, I'm going to go fill it out. Yes. There's about, there's, I'm going to say there's probably about six of us. Between six and eight out of, I think there's fifteen in-home daycares in Murray that I can find on the licensing website. And there's about six of us who want sixteen. We had sixteen. We had sixteen because Utah State came to us and said, guess what? Great news. You all get sixteen kids now. So we're like, four. So we all got sixteen kids. And then this year we went to reapply for a license and Murray City says, oh, that's an error. You don't get sixteen, you have to go back to twelve. So we just need to get our sixteen back that we had, that we thought we had. So yeah, the rest of us don't want sixteen. We're happy with, they are happy with the eight or the twelve they have. Six or eight of us would like to get our children back.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open up the meeting to the public comment if there's any.
Leanne Parker Reed, I just have a quick comment. I've been involved in teaching children and preschools and daycares for quite a while myself. And I appreciate the home business and continuing with that. My only concern about the sixteen would make sure that there's enough staff and that space is, you know, adequate. And if you're working with any children with disabilities, that that is handled and just all of those little things that work with the little people. So I appreciate that. I should be talking to you. I get it. I just wanted to make sure that we are looking out for them, not just to make an extra buck or something like that, you know, so.
Thank you, thank you. If there's no other public comment, you can certainly come up and talk to that.
And go back to the language that we're proposing.
Yeah. So I'll close the public comment and you can come up and, you can come on up, yeah.
My name's Monica Jenkins. I live at sixty-two thirty-one South Fashion Boulevard and I've been doing daycare for fifteen years. And I did want to address that. I just want them to know that we are basically aligning with childcare licensing laws for the whole entire state, that they, the federal law that goes through the entire state and everybody. And that's why we were actually tending sixteen before, is because we actually were just abiding by their laws. And they do actually are very strict on this. We do have to have more than one caregiver. We have to have six-foot fences. We do get drop-ins and we get inspections. We are very well monitored and we are for sure making sure we are on top of everything. And we do love our children very much. We make sure we take care of them. And for sure, we have enough staff. We usually, I actually have about three or four caregivers, yeah, caregivers that do daycare with me. And we trade off and we make sure that we are always in line with all the rules and regulations and everything like that. And we love the kids. We would never do anything that would put them in any danger or anything like that. And we do take care of any disabilities or anything like that. Like I said, they regulate us and make sure that if there's disabilities, there are certain regulations we have to go through with the state. Childcare licensing is like we are, we are licensed with the state and they are very well equipped with all the training and education and everything we need for these kids.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, I've already closed the public comment. We answered the one question, I think. Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners?
I just have a question because I was going through this code and I feel like it was in part A. This is part C. Maybe it was part B. It says that this applies to preschools as well. Is that true with this part C or is it separate?
C is separate than.
Okay, so it's not applying to preschools.
Exactly.
Great. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anything else? I think we're, I think we're there. So I'll ask for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to approve to the city's council for the proposed amendment to Section seventeen point two four point zero five zero, adding subsection C and amending the residential zones to change the number of children permitted at an in-home childcare is reviewed in the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Kling. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Rogers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. David, can you do a vote? Commissioner Kling?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hildreth?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Horistro?
Yes.
Chair Richards?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. It's passed. And thank you for staying so long.
Thanks. All right, do we have any announcements and questions?
We will be having a meeting on July seventeenth. I believe, Katie, you told me you will not be here? Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Rogers, I apologize. And other than that, I think you all have a wonderful, wonderful fourth. And yeah. Do you anticipate a large, a full agenda on the seventeenth? Four? Yeah, four items. One of those is bringing up the revocation again. The.
Legacy materials will be on the seventeenth.
Yes, good. I was going to, I was wondering about that. Good, yep.
Sorry. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Chair, a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Nine eleven. Thank you.
Thank you.